We'll get started before we get out of here. We call meeting the orders. If there was a review of agendas or any revisions to be made to the agenda.
Jimmy on your smartphone.
Service down here in this hole.
Says no service down here.
I'm staying back.
No, I got service that told me I needed a password.
I've only got three more. Everyone should have November 29 meeting minutes. Everyone's had a chance to review those and find a motion to approve. Second. Third. Fourth. Do we have any commissioner comment?
Very small. I think we have our retreat coming up next Thursday or Tuesday, Thursday? It sounds like we're going to probably get some business done while we're there. It came up, we're going to have the last nice meeting, but all of a sudden the floodplain coordinates is maybe looked at quickly for some reason. Quite sure, understand why, but anyway, we're going to do it. We'll probably discuss that next week. It's going to probably jump. FER the commissioners has finished up with the forefront of processes and sign order limits. We're not expecting this to be done. So is that how you gathered it last night, Matt? I don't, I mean, I know where it came from from public orders, but I don't understand the rush behind it. But anyway.
I don't need, I'm telling you.
How that's leading my voice.
Yeah. So that's something that's going to be passed by the planning board review or the committee?
That's correct. I think that they were going to have Chester go ahead and look at something and then have it ready for y'all at retreat. That's correct, Ron. That was my understanding, that the retreat next Thursday, go ahead and hand it to y'all. I don't know if we'll talk about it there, but y'all will definitely have a chance to review it before we take any action on it. If I can give you some more background.
I don't know the floodplain. Everyone's. Floodplain or the last few years.
About 10, 12 years ago.
I think it's more.
I commend my note.
The last plan was on what's going on with the total works and why.
I think we're looking for y'all's plan to put on too. I think we're asking them to look at sign order first, then we're going to task something else at the retreat next week. I think we're going to flip flop it for last night. We had some public comment period at the start of our meeting last night that brought up by the public about we're looking at it and the reasons why. For some reason, the fire storm last night, the next thing I know is we talked about moving out of the ballpark and everything. So it's kind of interesting to me, discussion and looking at it. We'll get into the details now, now the track's down.
But probably my, when we made the end, there was a clear definition of what Chester looked at, what were the tasks with.
Yes, probably so. Yeah. Again, I will follow the standard of the reasons why. There were some reasons brought up last night. Thanks that we looked at.
Is that something they'll be able to send out before meetings and we can put ideas what is possible?
Yeah, I'll make sure that I get that as quickly as we are.
Just to turn them off the conversation.
Yeah, agree. Again, I don't personally, I didn't see the rush yet, but we're in a little rush all the time. I'll get it done.
Um, I guess you.
Yeah, that's all right. Thank you.
Public comment. Um, no one finished this, but I'm worried. Next, the election of chair and vice chair. You know, I've served chair there, vice chair the past year. First meeting of the new year, we were elected chair and vice chair. What I can say, I'll open forward, four nominations for chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion by motion that we keep our previous chair and vice chair.
Any other nominations? No other nominations, but the maiden second. Any discussion?
Derek would agree to that.
She'll show up.
Period, man. All in favors now.
Congratulations.
I can't speak entirely for Derek, but I will say this, you just expect more of the same. It is what it is. Tonight, we've got Mr. Rans, Ron Handtucklins. He's come and given us that's the package for the agenda at his workshop, and he's going to put on some other material to talk about later. Ron's with the Division of Community Public Assistance. Some of us wants to make an actual personal for smoke up. And then we've also got Justin. Justin's one of the new planning board members of town. Well, for him, they con him into the job too, so he's on the same boat.
You need to get up here. Got this paper.
Ron, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Thank you for having me back. I met Matt and the chair in Haywood County when we're doing a planning board workshop in Haywood County a couple of months ago. They asked us to come out here and do the presentation again. But before I get started on the presentation, I want to just give you a little bit of background about myself and our organization and also get some information about you all. The Division of Community Assistance is based out of Asheville and serves the 25 most western counties in the state, and we provide three core services, first being land use planning, then we have facilitation services and planning board training, board of adjustment training, which is of course what we're here for tonight. We usually do this type of training once or twice a year for a regional setting. I think that's the one you were referring to. So a couple of times a year, we'll have a regional setting, and that's an all-day workshop. So what we're doing tonight is kind of a reader's digest version. It's going to be condensed down into a little less than two hours. And depending on how things go, it might be a little less than that, trying to get out of here a little bit before six o'clock. I want you to know that this is not about me up here to lecture to you or preach to you about being on the planning board. I want to have this be back and forth, some interaction between us and dialogue amongst yourselves and have some good conversation tonight. And to get that started, for my benefit, I know you all know each other, but for my benefit, if we could just go around for the planning board members that I don't know this board, that would be helpful. Maybe just a little bit about your background also.
My name's Jenny Gittman. I've been academy member for about 22 years until recently. They called me maybe sit down, been on the planning board, I guess roughly five or six years. Been involved in making county as far as volunteer and things like that.
Great.
My name's Chris Hannah, some structural engineer and planning board for about a year. I'm a little people, a little from Scandale, building and working about six o'clock.
I'm Jim Day, I'm county commissioner and we have some.
Okay. Nice to have you.
I'm John Underwood. I'm a builder from Highlands, North Carolina, and I've been on here for about a year.
Thank you.
Lewis Penlon. I've been on here way too long, I can't remember how long, but it's like an eternity. Built golf courses for third year, Palaces Real Estate Development.
Yeah, I believe we met in Colley at Western, we had a conference out there. You know, when you say it's been an eternity, one of the small towns that I worked with in Burke County, I was asking the same question, how long have you been on? Every member of that planning board has served over 20 years. And it was, I mean, in that community, I guess, when you get appointed to the planning board, it's like being on the Supreme Court. You're there for life, and these, for those guys.
Adventure service.
Little smaller community, but ma'am?
I'm Penny Patterson. Been in real estate 40 years. I've served on NTAAR, I've found all offices there, local board. My husband is a land developer, so, and we lived in Macon County our entire life, so we don't leave a rock on each.
All right.
Sir? I'm a marshmallow. I'm on land surveyor in Macon County for about 40 years, been on this board. I guess about 13 years, I've been here longer than that.
You're the veteran?
I guess I've been here longer than that.
One year running.
Yeah, she come pretty soon after I.
Right. Well, this might be a little bit of review for you, or maybe we'll ask you to give us some pointers by the end of the night.
I might just figure out.
My name's Mark West. I've served a couple of terms on the planning board, and I've recently been back on a couple of few months. I'm retired due power. I've been involved around the county for 40 years, I guess.
Great.
I'm Susan Erving. I've been on one last year, or more, just 12, 13, whatever. I do a lot of community work on our environmental and horticultural areas currently involved with the Cali School Heritage Project and a coordinator for legal and motors.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Jack Morgan, county staff director of community planning development, started Macon County the first time I did that.
All right. Good to have you here. The materials that have, that the staff is presenting for you tonight include this Macon County Planning Board Workshop. I'm going to be referring to that throughout the presentation. It's kind of supplemental material. This is what we provide in our standard workshop. It's from some information that the school of government at UNC Chapel Hill has provided. We do a lot of work with them and also some folks over in Western Carolina, the local government training program there, help us out with our facilitation needs and our material needs. The first thing I want to do, make sure you guys can see this screen okay. That's still looking good. You've got the handout of the presentation itself, if you can't see it on the screen. The workshop overview, what we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about why plan. We're going to talk about the planning board authority roles, rules and responsibility, the legal context, just a little bit on that. Long range planning, some newer planning tools, public participation, and then effective meetings and effective board members and boards. So why plan? This, I ask this every time, and does anybody jump in? Why do you feel like you've been appointed to this board? Not because of your background necessarily, but what do you think the board's role is for the community in Macon County? Anybody? I'm going to pick on the veterans if nobody jumps in.
I've been wondering that ever since I've been.
Surely you got an idea.
The main reason I'm on here is because we were going to, there was going to be a subdivision board, and I had a lot of experience doing subdivisions. And I think that's where I got started, and then I've just kind of stayed on since then.
Yeah, we're going to talk a lot about subdivisions or ordinances in general, but that's a lot of what the planning board's role is, is to assist the elected officials with their decision-making and help them come up with ordinances and rules or regulations, and especially in regards to land use and land use planning. In short, my answer is it's to prepare for the future. Your job as the planning board is to plan for the future. So hopefully through the work that you're doing here, we're preparing Macon County for the future. This is a standard kind of laundry list of answers to that question of why plan. So you have, again, assisting with decision-making, solving community problems. You can help guide the economic growth of the county and provide for efficient public services, like with the subdivision regulations, if you're requiring certain utilities and that sort of thing, and the ordinances, that's providing for future development. And also enhances the overall quality of life. That's what your main role is, is to serve the community and help enhance their quality of life. And then finally, of course, it's also to meet certain legal requirements. And a lot of that has to do with zoning. You don't have zoning here, right? You have no countywide zoning in Macon County, but in places that do have zoning, the zoning regulations have to be made in conjunction with a comprehensive plan. And that plan is also required for DOT to come out and help you with a comprehensive transportation plan. As far as Macon County, did you have Region A come out and help you all with a comprehensive transportation plan? How old is your? What do you know?
Two years.
Two years, so that is good news, because the DOT requires that they, the comprehensive plan be at least five years old, or excuse me, less than five years old before they'll be a comprehensive transportation plan. Do you have a, apparently you have a plan that's simple.
About a year older.
One year older. I remember when I was working with those guys, they were kind of prioritizing how they were going to get, you know, clay versus swine, you know, making, and who was going to go first, and we were kind of racing to get those counties' plans done, so you already had yours in place. Did y'all do that here with this board, or did you have some consultants?
Board basically, it's that, I think, for the community.
Well, they did have a committee.
Yeah, that was a lot of committee.
They had a couple representatives from the planning board, didn't they? And I, well, I just bought another board at that point. Anyways, it's kind of cross section of town of county. Several staff people, when you were there, Derek.
Well, that's good. So you'll have a good background in what we're going to be talking about as far as long range planning, especially you board members have been on for a while. Some other requirements or why you should plan or incentives for planning is you might have better chances at getting funding, grant opportunities would come along with having a good comprehensive plan. A good plan, when it's clearly articulated, that's one of the things I want to specify or clarify really, is in the state statutes, it says that you have to have a comprehensive plan before you can do zoning, or you have to have a comprehensive plan before DOT will help you. It doesn't say you have to have a good plan, it just says you have to have a plan. So we still are trying to define, you know, what good or what qualifies. It seems like as long as you're, you know, making an honest effort and doing some planning in your community, it meets those criteria. So this, along with planning for the future, just enhancing the quality of life, a good plan articulates the vision for the future. So what you want the future of Macon County literally to be like is specified in a good And preserve, excuse me, preserve a sense of place. You hear this all the time in planning circles, or it's kind of like jargon, jargon, you know, the sense of place. To me, that characteristics would make a place different or unique, and it's kind of, it's been a little bit overused, I think, you know, we try and say what makes it authentic. Every place is a little bit different, but what makes, you know, a place unique? If you think about when you're traveling around, you know if a place has that kind of it factor. It either has it or it doesn't. When you go there and say, oh, this is a neat place, or this is a quaint place, it either has that sense of place or it doesn't. This slide here kind of shows that in a little bit of a comical way. This fellow's doing a slide presentation of his cross-country vacation, and he says, I believe this is Oklahoma, no wait, Arkansas, maybe Georgia, perhaps Virginia. No, it's actually before we left. So the point being, it's getting to where you can't tell one community from another because of some of the developments that are going on across the country. The idea for that is anywhere USA, so that's the, that's what you're trying to avoid for the most part, although some of those places, let me get back to you, some of those places like Outlaw Mall or Cracker Barrel, any of them actually, every community I work with would love to have that kind of development. Any kind of, any of that stuff would be welcome in most every community I work in. But it reaches a tipping point, it's like, how much of it do you get or want before it changes the characteristics of your community? And again, let me step back and say, I haven't worked in Macon County since I've been with DCA. I've been with DCA about six years, so this is the first time I've actually been here. And I took a little bit of a drive around on the way in and was impressed at how, I guess, busy the town was, you know, 3:30 the town was hopping, the place, there were obviously tourists on the street, it looked like tourists in, you know, mid-Fbruary, seemed to be at least, I saw a lady with an LSU sweatshirt on, and I thought. Surely she's not from around here. Okay, so the role of the planning board. And what I want to get to here is the specific responsibility that you all have, what's your typical agenda like? And we're going to come back to this a little bit later on in the section about planning more practice, but just be kind of thinking about that. What's your specific task that you do on a month-to-month basis? In the meantime, let's look at the types of local government planning decisions. This is also in your handout, starting on page four and five, there's an explanation of the types of local government decisions. This is everything and anything you would want to know about the different types of decisions. I'm going to focus, of course, on the planning board primarily, but just to kind of go over these real quickly. The governing board makes legislative decisions. They're making laws, they're passing budgets, they're making these types of decisions that affect the entire community. The planning board is advising them in those decisions, and often they're advising them in policy and things of that nature that aren't necessarily legislation. The board of adjustment is another board that has quasi-judicial authority. This is a more, really a more formal type of board. They have to follow a much stricter rules of procedure in their, in their actions. Do you have, I guess you have a board of adjustment for some purpose. What do y'all, what do y'all do? Are any of you on the board of adjustment? Okay. So board of adjustment really comes into play heavily with zoning. So zoning, here's the appeals and the various cases from the zoning ordinance. And then the planning staff, that's the administrative decisions, handles the day-to-day planning functions. That is, of course, Matt and his staff, and they're doing the heavy lifting for the county on the day-to-day. These general roles and responsibilities here, they recommend, or you recommend policies, you monitor the implementation of those policies, you might see that maybe something's slipping through the cracks that you need to tighten up on, advise again, and make those decisions in an advisory capacity. One of the reasons I think it's important, or I know that it's important, the responsibility that you have is, a lot of times, the planning board will have much more expertise or at least exposure to land use issues, to development issues. You're dealing with the subdivisions, you're dealing with developers that are coming, you're dealing with, you know, folks that are looking to expand or grow in Macon County. So you are advising that elected board on things that they may not have as much contact with, so to speak. If that makes sense. Not to say that, you know, they're not exposed as well, but you're the ones that are dealing with the developer for the most part, you know, on a face-to-face basis. So your advice should be held in high regard, even, even though, for the legal context.
Could you just pay for a glass of water?
Just kidding. We're going to come back to that. For the legal context, I just want to give you a real brief introduction about some of the legalities of planning in North Carolina. I'm not going to try to insult you. Some of this stuff is very basic, it'll go back to your high school civics class, and if you can remember that, you're doing a lot better than I am, but I have some points to remind me. So the government hierarchy, of course, the top is the federal, Supreme Court, or excuse me, the supremacy of the constitution and its laws, and the limits on state and local powers. The state, of course, gives its power from the Fed. The state gives the local government its power, and without sounding too heavy-handed, basically, local governments aren't authorized to do anything that the state doesn't say they're allowed to do. And North Carolina is not a homelands state, meaning local governments, towns, municipalities, counties, don't, they have limited self-government. They require specific statutory authority to act, and having said that, the state of North Carolina recognizes that local governments should have a good deal or a great deal of authority to act, and they have given them a substantial amount of authority. Again, you possess and can exercise only the powers that are granted and expressed words, meaning those that are in the general statutes. Those barely implied or incidents of the powers expressly granted by the general statutes, and those include any supplementary powers that are reasonably necessary. That might be an example of, we're going to talk about aesthetics and design guidelines here in a minute, but that's the example. It's not specifically spelled out in the statutes, but it's been determined that aesthetics or appearance in design guidelines are a legitimate concern for local government. This slide is just legalist, it kind of explains that a little bit more. Broad construction is the term. You have limited self-government, but those powers are broadly construed, meaning it's not exactly set in stone as it sounds. Okay, for the planning and zoning guidelines, I realize some of this does not apply to you all, but there's basically three areas that you get your planning and zoning guidelines from. Court decisions, the general statutes, and local guidelines. The general statutes have planning and regulation of development. These are specific to land use, that's Article 18 of 153A for counties. Police power, the open meetings law and public records law, both of these apply to your proceedings here. This is explained in your handout also in pages 16 and 18. 16 through 18, there's a Q and A on open meetings. The. I can't think of any example of why the planning board would need to go into a closed meeting. I've racked my brain on it a little bit, some planning boards have the authority to have, but even that is fairly, pretty much a transparent process. So I can't think of any reason why this board would go into a closed meeting, have y'all ever had an occurrence of that? And then the public records law, that just has to do with the safekeeping, access, inspection, and destruction of your records. So your minutes, any of the exhibits that are presented to you, there's certain protocol for you to keep those for a certain amount of time and make those accessible to the public. So the police power, this is basically, you have the police power authority, within that, a general ordinance-making authority, and also specific police power ordinances, including the land use or the regulation of planning and development. If you think about this in a really, really broad sense, this is, the police power is how the government modifies or attempts to modify behavior and maintain order in the community, whether it's from, you know, the speed limit to implementing a subdivision ordinance. That's what we're talking about here. The difference between, say, Macon County and some other county that has a zoning ordinance in place is a county that has zoning or implements zoning has specific right to do that through the general statutes. Macon County can do land use regulations or regulate land use-type activities through its general police power. So it doesn't have to enact zoning to do land use regulation, does that make sense? That's a pretty important distinction there. When we were in Macon County, excuse me, in Haywood County, they regulate a whole bunch of stuff in Haywood County, but they don't have zoning. So they regulate just about everything that they possibly can without having zoning. So they have like a de facto zoning department, but each one of their ordinance is an individual standalone ordinance, so they might regulate mobile home parks and watersheds and hillsides and subdivision slopes. I mean, they've got a long, a whole long laundry list, I didn't have a chance to check out what you guys are actually regulating. Do you have that extensive of regulatory- Yeah. Reasonable list of things, yeah. So again, in Article 18, you have the specific authority to have planning and regulation of development, basically subdivision and zoning. So you're acting, your subdivision regulations using this planning and regulation of development authority. Conflicts of interest, basically all that zoning doesn't apply to you. Planning board does have conflicts of interest, limitations, and it has to do, and if you're making a decision, there has to be a very identifiable, readily identifiable substantial financial impact to you before you have a conflict of interest. If you're just making a, you know, a motion on something about changing the subdivision ordinance, say, the lock side, that's gonna affect everybody equally, so it wouldn't necessarily have an identifiable conflict of interest or, or, excuse me, identifiable financial impact on you. Another important thing about the planning and regulation of development versus regular or general police power is that you have to have more specific legal advertisements for the planning ordinances and also more public hearing requirements for part of the statutes. If you are interested in the conflict of interest language, that's on page 19 of your handout also. These other issues here taking spots on invested rights probably do not apply as much here. Although, for vested rights for subdivisions, if someone came in and got an approval or a development permit using an older subdivision ordinance, they would have a vested right to develop in the future using that. And are you all in the process of updating your ordinances now, or?
We're, we just got passed a amendment to the-
Okay, so any of the older subdivisions that you may have approved still have a vested right to develop under the older rules?
Once that amendment is passed, it's a process.
Okay, the local ordinances and guidelines, what I'd like to point out here is beyond just the usual zoning and subdivision regulations, you should also have some type of board rules, some type of bylaws or rules of procedure in place. Of course, you have, notice at the beginning of the meeting, your rules of procedure to formally make it a- a new chairman, or, yeah, nominate a chairman. So you're operating by some form of Robert's Rules, maybe, is that formal on case night to night basis?
It's not imperative. We follow a very, we follow a methodic procedure.
That's the case in most places. What about your public comment? Do you have, is there any occasion where you're gonna have a full gallery, where there are people, you know, chomping at the bit to have their say, or how's it going for you now?
That has happened before, we typically do not have a whole lot of public comment, but we always open the floor for public comment in every meeting it was formed.
Things we do go to the public hearing stage, but when they reach the commissioners. So that's when a lot of them turn out for public comment, is once we have given it to the commissioners and they have a public hearing.
That's when the public comes in, does there's any? So when it does happen, do you just let folks, you know, have the floor and speak their mind? Or do you have a cause to cut them off at like a three-minute limit, or anything like that, for four minutes? You're generous with the-
We promise to ask his questions.
He's been his heart there, Carl. Right, just as needed.
You know, one of the things that we've tried to start doing is, is we want a comment, we need public input, but we've asked that input be relative to what the planning board's actually working on versus somebody might be discussing with something else that's going on in county government, and they've been planning board's place to vent that. And, you know, we're, the planning board sitting here has no idea what the public is talking about, or this is what we're asked to work on at the time. So we have tried to limit public comment to comment pertaining to what we're working on.
That's a good policy. So do you have actual document, a governing document or rules of procedure, if you do? Okay, here's something that, this came up in Haywood County, this was a point of confusion. A lot of people were wondering how the extraterritorial jurisdiction came together between municipalities and counties. So that's what ETJ stands for, extraterritorial jurisdiction. Do you have a need for any specific review of this? Do you have any?
I think it's a gap break, yeah.
Okay.
Because that's since you've broken ground.
So-
He's with the town, so he can-
Okay, so for example, you've got- You've got an ETJ, subdivision regulations do not apply in the town's ETJ, so that's what this is saying. County land use has no jurisdiction in the municipal ETJ. The county police power, on the other hand, does have jurisdiction. So remember when I was saying, things that are adopted under the general police power are different than things that are adopted under the planning and development power? Your subdivision ordinance is developed, or excuse me, adopted under planning and development. Your general police power, say it's a junk car ordinance, or maybe a noise ordinance. Those are enforceable in the municipal ETJ. The county has the right to enforce those general police powers in the municipal ETJ. On the flip side, the municipal police power is not enforceable in the ETJ. So your county police force couldn't go out and enforce, you know, I don't know, you have a barking dog ordinance in town. They wouldn't go out and enforce that on the ETJ, but they would enforce all their zoning laws and subdivision laws. As part of their zoning ordinance, or part of their standalone junk ordinance?
Standalone.
Okay, so that one would not be in the ETJ. That's what, remember that kind of confusion we had? In Haywood County, there's this idea that, you know, that everything in the city is- Yeah, there's this kind of gray area that the city doesn't wanna enforce, the county doesn't wanna enforce, so there's this kind of no man's land where nothing's being enforced. So this just breaks it down into exactly where those lines should be drawn.
The city could, if it does adopt it, or ordinance made by the county, then they do, kind of, the curbs.
Yeah, that's a great point. The city can request, as long as the county agrees to it, that the county enforce the regulation, you know, county-wide. And that happens a lot in the smaller communities where they may not have the capacity to enforce ordinances in their own, in their own towns.
So what just meant, let's go back to the ETJ thing.
Yes, sir.
If something's going to get the high impact about, you know, you got your, you wanna put a junk yard in that one mile area, whatever. Did you say, tell me, can the county enforce that, or they can enforce that?
The county can enforce that, if it's adopted under the general ordinance-making power or the general police power. It can enforce the police power in the ETJ.
But not the county land use?
But not the subdivision regulations, right.
Or the high impact? Where would the high impact fall?
The high impact, if it's adopted under the general police power-making authority, which most of them are, it would be enforceable in the county's ETJ, or excuse me, in the city's ETJ. Okay, so for planning board practice, the main thing the planning board does is, like you said, 11 years ago, when you got on, your, your main job was to prepare an ordinance, prepare a subdivision ordinance. So the main thing that you're asked to do is prepare plans, comprehensive plans, or some type of plan, or come up with ordinances, the rules that are used to enforce those, those plans. And a lot of other things, this is a bunch of things that are common for planning boards to work on. So you've got long-range planning, amendments dealing with zoning, and public participation. Let's just go through these and see how many of these that you all are working on. I know you're working, you've already done your comp plan, what about any other type of planning? Strategic plans, or small area plans, or?
Maybe special topic plans, or design ordinance you've been working on, so, uh, several of us- subdivision ordinance you've been working on, I guess you'd call that a special topic plan.
Sure, yeah, I would call that a special topic plan, or, um, it's an ordinance for sure. For the amendments, again, that has more to do with zoning, public participation. You mentioned, you know, when folks come here and they wanna have their say, a lot of times, it has little to do with what you're working on, but they still are having their first involvement with local government. So one of the things that you're asked to do is interact with them and maybe educate them on some of the things that you're working on, and allow that input.
Where would the flood ordinance come, under the police powers or the other?
The police powers, I think, you're talking about the-
Flood plan, would that be under the land use plan?
Every ordinance we have, a county's power, under the land use.
Well, subdivision? I just wondered with flood ordinance, police power or land use?
Yeah, I believe the, I believe most, most communities adopt that under general police power authority.
So that would affect the ETJ?
Yeah, but I don't know for certain that that's how you adopted that ordinance.
Well, I don't know.
But if it were under the police power authority, again, it would be enforceable in the ETJ. So long-range planning, this is, making a case for long-range planning, don't have to make too strong a case since you just completed a long-range plan a couple of years ago. But because of the more residential development, of a lot of commercial development in many communities and other issues, a lot of counties are finding that they need to come up with a comprehensive plan. This is one that we did for Clay County a couple of years ago, and if you see this why have a long-range plan, it really mirrors why plan that list that we had before, why plan, it's the same kind of deal, why have a long-range plan? It's defining your vision for the future, or giving you, or protecting your sense of place, and again, meeting legal requirements. The planning process is a cyclical process, beginning at the top, going clockwise, forecasting trends, creating goals, having public approval, implementing and monitoring, and continuing to update. So your plan that you just adopted a couple of years ago should be an ongoing process. You'll continue to look at that as time goes by and update that, and ask that, those updates to be adopted. The types of long-range plans generally include the comp plan or land use plan, the strategic plans that we talked about, the small area plans, or other special topic plans. This is not important so much what is in there, but the point of a land use plan or comprehensive plan is to lay out what specific policies, objectives, goals that the county or a community might have, and have those officially adopted so that you can help guide development and growth in the future, whether it's physical development, social, or economic development, that is the objective there. This is an example from Rice and City, one of your neighbors, we did a comprehensive plan for them a couple of years ago, and this is the future, future land use map, if you will. And it doesn't include, you know, specific parcels or places, you're not trying to identify places specifically that are going to be developed, but general, kind of, general areas that certain type of development is likely to occur in the future. A strategic plan is a little shorter in term, or a long use, excuse me, a land use plan is usually from 10 to 20 years, and duration of strategic plan is typically two to five years. This is an example from Hillsborough, North Carolina, you can see that they're looking at a specific area and what they wanna do in the next two to five years, specifically, action-oriented type of project there. This is an example from the US 441 Small Area Plan in Jackson County. Again, just looking at a smaller area, not county-wide, but how growth might occur, or some of the objectives there for that smaller area. In Burke County, they do a lot of small area plans, so they break up the plant, or excuse me, they break up the county by area. Instead of taking on the entire county at one time, they'll do one area at a time, and it's kind of a ongoing thing. Kind of like painting, they get to that end, they turn around and start all over again. So in Macon County, I don't know if you have certain areas that might be suitable for some more stringent regulation or not. I know in Jackson County, again, I guess the cashiers, or, excuse me, Highlands area, they have some sort of local zoning area, is it cashiers? Cashiers, so they have a smaller area that has local development regulation, but not county-wide. So that's another example of a small area.
What, how does, how does a small area plan evolve? Does that start at a community request, does that, I mean, what, what, how does that process? Does that, I mean, what, what, how does that process?
Yeah, it's, well, to be successful, it should definitely start from the community. I say that because, you know, you wouldn't want the county to say, alright, guess what guys? We're going to start zoning you or whatever.
But if, if a community, a large community or a, or a larger corridor decided that they, they, they wanted some different things in that corridor, you know, what, what is their size requirement?
There are. I think it's, um, let's say it's 600 acres. 640 acres. So it's got to be at least 640 acres and it has to have a certain type of development going on, a lot of commercial and that type of thing. It can't just be a, you know, 640 acres of farmland and you're going to start laying down regulations. There has to be some type of potential growth area there and the size requirement. And I think there might be a population requirement also. But generally, to get it started, you would have a community based group come to the county and say, we'd like to start investigating, um, small area A plan. And then they probably ask you all to work on establishing some regulations or looking at what would be appropriate there. And then take it to the community and have the whole back and forth and, and take it to the elected board to get it adopted. Are there areas like that in Macon County? And then a special topic plan, like you said earlier, the signage and awning plan. The example that we have here, this is from Greensboro. It addresses, it can address any topics from signage to pedestrian to hesitation or greenways. And finally, under long range plans, take the time to create the plans, seek assistance. What that's referred to is seek outside assistance, maybe consultants, and then use the plans. These can be expensive. I'm impressed that you all did this internally because this is easily six figure project. When you hire an outside consultant or firm to do this type of work, it can, it can get very expensive very quickly. Okay, new planning tools. We'll move this, read this pretty quickly. What this is, is just more than the same old, same old, more than just zoning. Our communities have been changing, so you've got all kinds of different things going on from demographic changes, this could be, you know, the community might be getting older. There could be a rise in the median age in the community for various reasons. There could be sprawl, there's less of that in our area, but that is occurring. Agriculture is less prevalent or less profitable in this example. Different regulatory changes, whether it's from the flood plane rules to, um, other EPA rules. Who knows? The climate change issue, public health concerns are coming to the table a lot more now and especially in regards to land use planning. And then globalization, just the idea that, you know, we're not.
Give me an example of how public health concerns comes into play in land use.
Okay. The main way is, this is, again, this is just, you know, planning garden, but the main way is towns and communities have developed to be car oriented. So there's an idea that having the communities automobile oriented has created a less healthy population because people aren't walking as much. They're, you know, able to park exactly where they're going to shop and that sort of thing. So the idea is that you could have land use planning that promotes pedestrian and bicycle amenities and that sort of thing. And it would help, you know, help with the, uh, public health concerns. Of course, that's a, you know, that's a personal choice. It's not going to solve all this public health concerns, but that's the idea. These are the responses, starting with that, that one, bicycle and pedestrian planning and walkability. Um, another approach to that would be having greater public or youth involvement, getting folks more knowledgeable about, you know, what they can actually do for themselves to, to be healthier. Market assessments, there's a whole list of things I want to go through real quickly and then give you a couple of examples of things going on here in the region. Placemaking, when I was talking about sense of place, this is all of those things coming together to create a place, a sense of place, whether it's your, whatever type of transportation you have, the market communities that you have, how your downtown is, the types of things there. All of these come together, kind of ground zero, to create your sense of place. Again, biking, pedestrian planning is a big, big impetus. DOT will provide surplus funds to do bicycle plans, pedestrian plans. Um, a lot of counties are doing master recreation plans, greenway plans.
Greenway, every county must know, good on.
Yep. And those can be more than just, you know, for public health, those can be economic engines. There, there's a lot of places that have correlated their greenways into a whole attraction, whether it's tourism or, or what have you, but it's a, it's a, it's a big issue. Market assessments, this is an example of some of the work that we're starting to get into, especially in downtowns or smaller communities where we'll come in and kind of analyze the market, look at what the retail market's doing in a place and see where there may be some room for new types of retail establishments, that sort of thing. If there's, you know, room for another restaurant or room for a new apartments or, or how much you're actually losing that to other communities. That's what this is referring to. Communications and branding, this is something you've probably seen as well through your travels. And wayfinding, if you come to Buckland County in Asheville, as soon as you come there, you'll start noticing these wayfinding signs or branding signs. These are examples from all across the state, from Shelby and Baden, Waxahaw. This is just a way of kind of marketing your community and making your community more attractive. Vis- visualization is the idea that we're now starting to be more involved with the design professions, with landscape architects and architects and design professionals in general, to do planning or do quality planning for our community. This is another example of that, how computer graphics or computer illustrations can help with your, your planning efforts. So the case examples I mentioned earlier are from Bryson City and Maggie Valley. A couple of your small town neighbors that have tried to really enhance the quality of life, but also do something for the, the economy, to attract more people to the towns, to boost their economy. They're, both of these places are struggling a little bit. Bryson City is a little less so than Maggie Valley, but both of them have some issues. This was a planning board meeting where they were hard at work coming up with these standards. And Maggie Valley, their idea was they were going to require a certain architectural theme. So to get more cohesiveness in the town, when you go through Maggie Valley, it's not a, a real town in the, the traditional towns. It's just literally a valley, you just go down one long strip, one long corridor. And some of it is not very attractive. It, it looks like it's from, you know, 50s or 60s and hasn't been painted since the 50s or 60s. But one of, one of the things that they decided to do to try and improve that was have this architectural theme, this mountain style architecture, which included wood siding or natural building materials exposed, post and beam, native stone, other native materials, pitch roofs. You can see an example, this is what they wanted all their commercial development to develop to. This is an idea, this is the standard that they wanted it to develop to. All of their commercial developments would require a certain amount of landscaping in their parking areas. And again, this is from the outskirts, excuse me. Do you know where that is?
I'm sorry, yeah, 276.
Yes, sir, 276, all the way down 19, past town hall. So this whole area, that's what they were trying to accomplish. Get this area to conform to this certain theme. You've probably seen that around.
Yeah, I'd say. Now, the fire department at the other end is pretty much on the road right there. Out west, I go through there every day. And, uh, it's pretty much conformative to some of the things I've seen from there back.
Right. And that's one of the things they're struggling with is how, is that a good idea for the entire town or not? But the idea again is to improve their town by using these new techniques. I'll give you a little more, another example. So I was out there yesterday, actually. They were continually trying to tweak this to make it better. After three, four years, they're, they're still trying to make this work. These are just some before and after examples of what could be done. Have you noticed a change when you go through their plans that seem to clean up a little?
Has, has there been any discussions of what the cost impact of that was as a percentage basis on the projects that are being done over there?
Yeah, there's been a lot of discussion on that. That's one of the main things that people that are opposed to this idea. There's a lot of people that are not happy with that idea of being told what type of theme they're supposed to develop or what color they're supposed to paint their building. But one of the big things is, you know, I really resent being told I have to do this because it's going to increase my, um, operating expenses or development expenses. And nobody has done a, you know, exact quantification of it. If you do it this way, it's going to cost this, and if you do it our way, it's going to cost this much more. It's just understood that quality development will probably cost more than less quality development. If that makes sense.
But you're not talking about quality, you're talking about aesthetics.
Mainly aesthetics, yeah. We, that's the discussion yesterday was. The main discussion yesterday was how much is this going to cost? If we had to do the entire building a certain way, it's going to cost, it's going to be cost prohibitive. But if we just do the facade or just some cosmetic stuff, it's not really that, that expensive. Like if, some of those examples, that was the point of some of these examples. It wouldn't be that expensive to upgrade that to this and that would match their, their standard. It wouldn't cost that much. But the guy that owns that place said, it wouldn't cost that much as relevant because if I have to put this stonework all around my motel, that's, you know, that's a lot of expense. So in Bryson City, they were, Bryson City is an example of a town in western North Carolina that has no land use regulations right now. They don't have any zoning, they don't have any, um, subdivision regulations. They have, you know, very limited even related regulations. I think they have a mobile home park and that's about it. And they don't want it. They didn't want to say, we're going to start doing zoning in Bryson City. We're going to start regulating our, our community. So they decided, they decided not to go with conventional zoning, but go with something called form based codes, which is the regulations are based more on the form of the building itself than the use that's going in the building. So as long as you have a certain look, you can almost do anything in the building. It's not like conventional zoning is residential here, commercial here, industrial here, what have you. This is, you can have any type of use as long as it meets a certain form.
Their main street looks, looks pretty good.
Their main street, Bryson?
Yeah. It's kind of your form all the way down every street.
Yes, and that's what they're trying to preserve. That's all they want to do is make sure that, that doesn't change. Then the reason for that was somebody came in and, and put a metal building or something right on Main Street and made them like that out of testing. They wanted a little something to preserve their downtown heritage. So that was going to be just right here in that little small area, just that every street, Main Street area. That's where these regulations were going to apply.
And they had some, uh, railways coming there.
Well, the, I'll jump to the end of this story. They never adopted any of this stuff.
It's a great idea.
There's still no zoning or land use. But the idea was, again, you could do almost anything in these areas as long as it looked like.
So they say the economic benefits outweigh the land.
Yes.
And in some areas, they, they regulate things like setback, that you have to have up to the street in certain areas. And then neighborhoods, you have a certain amount of setback. And then in rural areas, it can be gray or, or heightened buildings, that you can't build one story buildings in the downtown. Things like that, that kind of, that aren't getting down to the color of the wood or whatever, but that are regulating more just form with heights and setbacks and density.
Exactly, and that's, I'm going to show you some examples from there right now. So in this little area right here, ever in the main street. Again, just like you said, the idea was make everybody on those streets build up to the facade or the line, the build to line instead of setback line. And that's, that was the idea there. No, they didn't, they sure didn't. Having the parking and landscaping requirements, the heights and those sort of things. But, yeah, long story short, they never adopted any of this. And it's, it's really a question in my mind why they didn't. Because we worked on it for a long time and the public came out in support of it. The business community was in support of it. But kind of, what we're going to talk about real shortly here is the elected board there just was not going to approve this plan, this, this type of ordinance. So finally, public participation tools. So when you're making your decisions, kind of like what you were talking about earlier, you're referring to, you know, allowing people to, to speak in the meetings or, or, or at least have their say as long as it was relevant. When you're making your decisions, these are some of the ideas that you want to communicate to the public. What, what type of decision you're making, what you're working on, you know, all of these things and, and the criteria that you're using and the timeline. And if there's any appeal recourse for this type of decision. So it's basically being transparent with the, with the public or the community. Some of the public participation tools include, um, news releases, social media. Public input, of course, would include things like a survey or public hearing. Um, a couple, real big, it's been more than a couple of years now. It's a real big, um, um, public involvement meeting here in Macon County on growth in general. This was in 2006 or '07, I think it was, before the economy really turned. And that was the, um, kind of the, really the birth of that landscapes, mountain landscapes initiative. But we did all of these types of things as part of that public involvement process. And then you have, you know, the referendum, which it's, it's under public partnership. Really, that's a, you know, that's a public vote. Okay, this is the effective boards members and meetings. Okay, this is the effective boards members and meetings section, and, I'm, it's, it's 5:20 now, and this is not gonna take very long, but it's, they're not gonna take very long at all, because I'm gonna go through it real quick. This is my least favorite part of this presentation, I make this joke, and forgive me if it's offensive, but this is the part that comes from Asheville, this is the warm and fuzzy part of, I'm supposed to tell you guys, you're adults, and I'm gonna come up here and tell you how to be an effective board member, how to behave, but-
If I give more value than you realize.
So, again, some questions to consider, you know, while you're watching the Duke-Carolina game tonight, you might ask yourself, what does it mean to be an effective planning board member? What makes a good planning board member? What is your job description? All of these, I think, are good things, good traits or characteristics that you would need to be a good planning board member. One thing I wanna point out here is this last bullet, understand that local officials may not take your advice. What it should say is, understand local elected officials may not take your advice.
Will not.
Will not. Need to edit that for some places, I guess, but that's the main thing. Again, like in Bryson City, we worked on that forever, we got the reassurance, oh, everybody's on board, everybody's on board, and it still wasn't enough to invent some of those elected officials. And this just goes back to, you know, remember who appointed you, and what you're supposed to be working on. What's important here, though, and you probably already do this, is to have a work plan, so that for the next year, maybe if you have a retreat, or, were you talking about the commissioner's retreat?
We're having a retreat with the planning board, you see.
Okay. So, one of the things that you might wanna consider is having a work plan, if you don't already do this layout, okay, over the next six months or the next year, this is what we're gonna be working on, this is what we wanna accomplish, and that way the planning board and the governing board are both clear on, on what's expected. So, for this slide, you know, I see you already have a liaison, for this slide, there's two points. You know, the, the reason that planning boards and govern, governing boards get at odds is mainly because-
Politics.
Yeah. Just let it go there. Usually, and what I've seen is because the, um, governing board feels like the planning board is overstepping their bounds, or working on something they're not being asked to do or shouldn't be working on. And the planning board gets upset because the governing board ignores or doesn't take their advice into consideration, or doesn't adopt their plans. Those are the two main things, and, but, I don't, I don't know that there's a answer to that, you know, it's, it's the same everywhere, politics comes into play, but as long as you're just not totally working on something that, you know, is not in the realm of the planning board. In one town, I worked on, the planning board decided they were gonna change the water rates. So, they worked on that for, you know, probably-
Don't give us no idea. What, in your experience of the counties that you're familiar with, what percentage of planning boards has a, a county commissioner liaison?
Very few.
Hey, we did, that's, and that's the other boards, counties that I've been to, um, the majority of them do not have liaison, and I think that, that, you know, hats off to our county commissioners for, for having liaison, and active liaison, um, as well as other members, board members that are, that are in attendance, and, you know, that, that, that makes our job so much easier, because, you know, they're still involved in maybe what's going on, and, you know, talking to some folks in Black, there's another county, you know, our planning board, they, they get five calls the next morning, you know, what's going on, what's going on, so.
Yeah, that, that's a really great point, I mean, I can't think of one, except maybe Asheville, Buncombe County, that have that relationship. Usually, it's to, it's, somebody from the planning board goes and makes a presentation at a commissioner's meeting, that, or the council meeting, that's usually the way it works. At each council meeting, somebody, the chair, somebody representing the planning board will come up and give a report, or the staff will give a report.
At that point, the commissioners are here, they might think, what, somebody wants them here, and the state department, what, you know, the discussions are really happening.
Yeah, that's why it's so important, and that, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, because, you know, every, everybody's busy already, and as an elected official, you've got a number of meetings that you're expected to attend already, but when you're dealing with important issues, it seems like, you know, if they're not the liaison, they'll at least be in the gallery, they'll be there to see what's going on when the issue really gets heavy. This staff slide, work with staff, staff is working with all of you all, so, you know, how many folks do you have on your staff?
Just, just- There's three.
Yeah, yeah, so you gotta please everybody all the time. So, you know, I'm just giving a plug to the staff, because they really are the, the ones that you're, you're counting on, for the information, for getting things, kind of breezing the wheels, making everything happen, making the computer work this afternoon, that sort of thing. This is Jeff's reward chair, so I think we went over this at the Haywood County meeting. Finally, controversy is part of planning, I'm sure you all have seen your share of controversy at planning meetings.
And part is part about planning, who's planning, or who kind of is painting that big picture that we're supposed to paint, because we always come out with this idea, but nobody understands.
Yeah.
And you're thinking, 25 years down the road is a very hard thing to do.
Yeah, and that's the thing, it, it's kinda, it kinda gets lost, too, you know, that's the ultimate goal, is to have a better community 25 years down the road, but it's important because, you know, somebody, when you see really, really successful communities, somebody was thinking about that 25 years ago, it takes a long time, it's not gonna happen overnight, it's little steps, but, you know, you have to think long-term, but that, you're right, that's the challenge. The last thing I wanna point out from this part of the presentation is this third bullet here, annoying people can have good ideas and valid concerns. I don't know, none of you guys seem very annoying, I mean, but maybe, who knows, when you're having your ongoing discussions.
Chris, don't wave.
It's alright. This is, this is just something that, you know, most points have a valid element to them, there's, I gotta tell the story, then I'm done, but in Madison County, where I've done a ton of work over the years, we meet in the Madison County courthouse, and the public always comes to that for some reason, and-
It's Madison County.
It's Madison County, and there, there, um, for about three straight meetings, this lady brought her kid. Her kid was in the aisles of the chambers, courthouse chambers with like Legos or something, and throwing them around, and nobody was doing anything, we'd all be making our presentations. It got to the point where she came to the meeting one time with some herb, some kind of herb, and asked everybody to take a piece of this herb and like, you know, do some sort of ceremony with it, so that we'd have a good meeting.
She's just calling her mom.
But, that's just a, you know, a extreme example of how annoying people can still have good ideas, and she had the best interests of the community at heart. And they, they got their stuff fast there, I guess the herb.
Can we kiss in the background, is it a brown?
That's all I have for the-
Pass it around.
That's it. All we got out of this is, we're gonna have herb at the planning board meeting. Does anybody have any specific questions? We appreciate you taking the time, we appreciate the information time that you give us, and that's what we're gonna do.
Thank you.
I can't figure it out.
Where?
Six o'clock.
Next Thursday?
I cannot read it. My last birthday is next Friday, so I can't read it.
I have a personal problem. He can be real expensive if he's not, if he is here.
Yeah, if she goes by herself, it'll cost a lot more, that's what-
Um, if it's at six, I may come at like six thirty.
Gotta be, be like a man, quarter percent.
Okay. See, now, you have to, that's a different change from me.
He didn't send it out of his email, he's not speaking.
Twenty first.
We skimmed.
Six o'clock.
Twenty first.
Thursday, the twenty first, it's six.
Do we get herbs or anything else there?
We're not doing a total dinner, we'll have something.
If I just pull up there, I'll figure out where I'm going.
It's in the bar, it's going there.
I'm sure, I'm sure people will be bowled.
Bill?
We'll raise up-
Is there somebody you can drop down with?
I'm gonna be late, 'cause I'm hoping to be coaching some boys for the championship game next Saturday.
Anybody, anybody have anything else? Four, four, four.